We're going to open this finals meeting, we're 28th, 2017, and discussion on the 2017 appropriation, and other areas of interest. This would, our goal is to be out of here in about 45 minutes, so we can get after some of this stuff here, discuss this worksheet, discuss potential changes or suggestions or acceptance of more closer to a permanent appropriation. Chief Kramer's here, and he was going to talk at council this evening, but being we had the finance, we need scheduling, we'd better suited to talk here to us now, we can discuss stuff. You can either sit up here or stand up here, whichever one you want for him.
I'd be more comfortable sitting.
That's fine. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Are you still drawing your gun on this thing?
With that, are you still drawing it? We do practice that, you know.
Oh, excellent, excellent.
So, I just wanted to kind of talk to you real quick. I know I sent an email, I think to you, maybe Mr. Monk, I gave everybody a copy. Okay. Go ahead. Just going to kind of, I didn't know if you had any chance to discuss it or not, I'm not sure if you had a meeting since then or not, but just with the cars, I know obviously the financial situation is really bad. And Mr. Stiff said that in 2018, you know, things were going to start looking better. And I do not have numbers for you, because I didn't want to go through all that if it wasn't even considered. But I do know the company that we financed through, I think it's Bankor, they can, we can get new cars and defer payments for up to a year, so, you know, if we were to get, we're in pretty bad shape right now. Our Charger, which are three out of seven newest cars, they're just, have not turned out very well. The suspension is so bad that they are regularly setting off the crash alert on the in-car cameras. It has a feature, the in-car cameras do that when there's an auto accident, it kicks on and starts recording, so it captures what, because it'll go back and capture what occurred. And with the condition of the road and the condition of suspension of the cars, they're constantly doing that. So, those are in bad shape, our Explorer are getting a lot of miles on them. I just didn't know something that you could consider if we were to order cars, and again, I can give you numbers if it's something you think you would look at, what it would cost, but the last time that I talked to Bankor, they did say that they could push payments up to 12 months. You know, if we were to order cars, I mean, just say next month, a couple months before they come in, you could look at payment sometime in July, I would guess, or so, in 2018 year of July.
How many, sorry?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. And I, I just kind of, I was like, I, my, you know, for the Chargers, that last payment, was that here?
Just, you know, we just made the last payment.
Just made the last payment of that, so.
Thirty-three thousand, it's done.
Right. At that time. And then, we still owe on the Explorer.
Yes.
But I didn't have that breakdown of those, but I did, I kind of see what we, how from under a deal on those. And I did, actually, I asked Jim a question for him. We.
I'm going to get a question.
Well, we were just going to say, you know, we, how big would we look at? Two or not even?
I mean, I would take off, whatever you can give me, two. Three would be great, four would be better, it would be okay, I mean, you know, I guess what we can afford.
Another question, having an interruption, but are we looking at Chargers again, or are we looking at? We probably be looking at Explorer, they've held up pretty well. Chargers have kind of fallen off the, the department for not buying the Chargers anymore. I didn't know if there were any other types out there. I bring back the old crank dicks. There is, I did see something on, on the internet, I guess it's got to be true, they were bringing back the crank dicks, maybe, but right now, they're, they're just holding up.
Yeah.
They're going to break cars. Sorry, Jim, over here.
We're just going to bring up the restrictions of fiscal emergencies, that we cannot enter into any lease or purchase things over time without approval from the state auditor. And what they've said to us so far, in discussing like a truck for Public Works, was along the lines of, you can buy whatever you want if you pay for it cash this year. And, and I'm not saying that's hard and fast, but I think that we need to sell them on the idea. You know, I think the, I think it's very attractive to push off that, you know, first payment, and we're not going to be perfect in 2018, but this is something that would have to be built into the longer term financial plan that we're putting together, so.
Would it help then, I mean, if I would give numbers of what we were looking at, so?
I think being able to show them numbers at any point is beneficial.
Okay.
It's just, understand there's another layer to the bureaucracy that you're going to have to kind of work through. And that's true for all of our leases, for everything that we've got. When we go to renew something, they have to approve it, so.
Sure. But, a lease, board is going to be set soon, I think.
Yes, the next week or so.
They have something.
Two weeks, huh?
They're all up to the governor.
I will get it together.
Yeah, but I think it's past that point.
Oh, yeah, because they've been selected. He's not my friend.
Not a big fan.
So, I'll put, I'll get some numbers together.
And, you know, and maybe we could even, and I can talk to the people that are, the local government services, the auditor of state, and maybe see if we could sit down together.
Sure.
And then have a better idea to come back to finance committee.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about was the possibility, and I talked to the mayor, and he said I would have to come to council, he said he was supportive, obviously he's not, not here, was the idea of hiring, we are down. Again, I don't like to come here, I, in the situation we're in, but we have a contract, it's hard for me to provide the services, we're down seven right now. I guess the way I look at it, and maybe I'm looking at it wrong, is, you know, we've had several people leave just over the last 18 months, if they hadn't left, we would still be paying for them. So, I didn't, we have an active test right now, and it expires real soon, sometime either this month or early April, I have to get the TA to get the date on it. I know from the interviews, there were several people on that test that we liked, they were certified. If we should get approval to hire, I would help with, because I know, obviously, from looking at things, the funds are not there, I can use some of the drug fund money to pay for some of the free employment stuff, and also the uniforms, and if that's something that we can get approval on. And I'm not asking for seven, I can't handle seven new hires at one time, you just don't have the, the ability to do that. Three or four, with the idea, we still have guys that are looking to leave, it's just kind of plugging a hole in the meantime, so. For the account, we're not too soft there, I'm not sure what, they have a personal breakdown as far as what we did. And then, what I'm just saying, what we did, we base our, our preliminary.
I'll have to pull up the sheet, I think it was whatever the staffing was in October, like September, October timeframe, I can look and see how many officers are on that sheet. Because the staffing numbers that we ran were based on actual active employees, and that level of staffing for, is where these numbers come from. So whatever that number was, I'll just, we just count them up. Have you, one of the things that we had talked about before, and I thought we did it here, was this idea that when new officers come on, it's the practice to buy kind of all their uniforms at once, and so if somebody's starting in May or June, you're buying their winter gear at that time too, is that, is it, would it be any more expensive to split that up and say, we're just buying your uniforms for summer, and then come fall, we're buying the ones for winter?
It would not be any more expensive, you know.
That's just a way of spreading out the costs, that might be something to look into.
Yeah, it would certainly be, it wouldn't cost any more to just split that cost up, if you came on, you know, in the meantime, to buy summer later, or old winter.
Right. Just something to think about.
Are you happy to staff overtime because of the decrease in?
We regularly have overtime because of the decrease, yes. And, I mean, just to kind of add, I mean, I have four people from positions to try it, so we don't have as much overtime, but, I mean, regardless, we still use overtime because we are, we are short. You know, we, we no longer have our own drug unit because, because of staffing, so. Is that something we're limited by the state as well, hiring, is that, Mr. Stiff, do you know? Shit. I'm not sure as far as.
No, as far as I'm aware, there was no restrictions for them.
Maintain, you know, the service, and we have, if somebody leaves, then we, we can't replace, you know, somebody through the situation we're in. But I think if we would hire over the buck what, what the, what the needs are, then I think that would come into question by the board, so, you know, whether they have to approve it or not, I don't see that. But, kind of replacing people that have, you know, recently left, or something that I would see, I would say we'd have to run the number and see what, where we were in October, or what we base these numbers on.
Right, and we have a list of actual employees' names, so we can just.
Yeah, I, well, I mean, it is somewhat, and I'm time sensitive, in the sense that just with this test expiring, there's still schedules, psychologicals and physicals and final interviews, you can take a little bit of time to do. So, you still have a good test with enough people on it to potentially choose one? There is, yeah.
If we had to retest times, what would the process be?
It's usually around six months or so. It takes a while to, you get to do the physical fitness test, which takes a lot of setup, you have to do the background, which are really what takes the longest. I mean, we, if we were a full sample, we could do it quicker, because we could have more people doing it, but that's just a kind of a ballpark figure, it does take a while. Particularly the backgrounds, we like to do, obviously, for, you know, good reasons, a very thorough background, and it, you know, we got people who, you know, some of them live pretty far away, we like, you know, we usually go through the, we get it to all their employers, and speaking in person, it's not just a phone call, you know, it's a personal visit. So, I guess, you need to check to see the numbers that are there.
As far as any restriction from the state goes, it's my understanding that once you pass your recovery plan, which will be in about 120 days or so, once you pass that, you have to go back to them to make any changes on any of the appropriations. But if you have like staffing at a certain level, and that money is appropriated, and somebody leaves and you hire a new one in, as long as it doesn't change the amount of the budget, we shouldn't have to go back to them for things like hiring people that leave. How that affects us moving up to that point, I think, that's really the question, and we'll have to address that to the commission, but I think that if we can show that we can pay for them, then we would be allowed to do it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. To the auditor, is your office allowed to, like, what if we go over the appropriations in a key while we're in this fiscal emergency? Is your office still allowed to write those checks, or would you have to get permission from?
You mean for payroll?
Yes.
As we start, started to get close, we would have the state auditor watching that and looking at it, as they'll be checking our, our balances every month, and then they would probably take that, or we would take that to the commission. And, so there is that other layer of bureaucracy at that point that can say, no, you're not allowed to do this, because you've run out of money in this key. So I'm not sure how that's going to play out, but I think they're going to be watching it closely as we get closer.
I guess primarily what we're following by here is that you can see what we did, budgeted in October, when we put the temporary together, and the people were there.
Right.
The money is there, and then, you know, as far as what, probably three, potentially three, four, discussed with the mayor, auditor's office, and see what, what dollars it would take to do that over and above, if it's over and above what we have, I'm in there right now. So that would be something we'd have to run and check through, yeah.
And Mr. Sinker, and maybe Chief, we can talk about this later, but it's my understanding that there were, I think, nine sergeants currently in the contract, possibly only calls for eight, I might be wrong on that.
That is correct.
Would there, if a sergeant leaves, would there be any savings by just not filling that position, do you think, or?
I think what would happen is, you, it's kind of hard, even, even, the courts are the one that mandated that ninth position, the contract issues never change, I think it's, you certainly give it a try, but I don't, I have a court case, for the net personnel on that one, so I can't say for sure, but I, I believe that's why the city has kind of always told it, because they, they do the court that ordered it. That has gone on for a long time, I can't really see as to why the contract has never reflected that, but it happens.
Okay, yeah, I can talk to you later, thank you so much.
All right, cool, thank you, I appreciate your time. The other things that were in your, left a lot of those same will be taken care of in the appropriations.
So, the, most of those purchase orders, I'm sure the fire chief got two, that came through as the initial purchase orders of the year, the temporary appropriations only had the things for the major contractual issues, and when the permanent appropriations passed, all of that will be reset.
Okay.
And so, those just probably all need to be resubmitted, but then you'll know how much you have.
Sure.
Based on that, and that should be within, well, this month.
Okay.
As opposed to going and changing the temporaries, and unless there's something that's an emergency, it's just all going to reset, and have the full budget.
Okay. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry. I know we have a lot from Chief Wallace, it's going to be coming up on council for tonight, but if you want to say something else, or another couple things in regards to, what we should be caring, for medical.
I have to think, well, the biggest thing right now is the fact that we, we're running with one medic unit that is 11 years old, one that's 16 years old. Our newest unit is a 2011, which is currently sitting at the dealership waiting to get, to have a new engine put in. I think it's keeping me up at night, because I keep worrying that, with the age of those other two units, if one of those or both of those were to break down, we would have no way to transport people to hospital. I mean, we could still make, we could still make a few echelons, because we have fire apparatus, and enough paramedics that are on the fire apparatus, we have basic paramedic equipment on the fire apparatus, but we would not be able to transport. So, our next line of defense would be to call for mutual aid, which unfortunately, our mutual aid, that we normally use, one of them being St. Bernard, has also reduced their shafting, so the chances of them, and they can deny us, and they have denied us. And also, we have to reach out potentially to Gulf Mayor, but they've got four people on staff, so I don't know that they're going to send us theirs, because they're also running into Amber Village and Columbia Township. Cincinnati, we're running, I think, 13 units, that are running consistently, constantly through the city of Cincinnati. So, my concern is that we would get there, we would bring, you know, bring 30, but we would have no way of, you know, we'd get this person transported to the hospital unless we went to rank and handle this, you know, potentially. But it's sitting over there at the dealership, they've given us an estimated cost of approximately 20,000, it could probably be a little bit less than that. And I put a PO in, and I don't know, that's one of my questions too, I put a, I put a budget in, and I sent to council, to finance, to Mr. Stiff, to Mr. Gears, has anyone seen it? I mean, has anyone even looked at my budget yet?
As far as looking at it, yes, but as far as actually having it in the appropriation right now, we're still on a temporary appropriation, so that the final budget hasn't really been put in place, as far as having money in, like, say, for the 20,000 to take care of that. If that is an emergency where we could change the temporary to, to get that moved forward, but otherwise wouldn't, until the final appropriation would be put in place, that, that's why that would have kicked back to you as far as, you know, not having them.
I intentionally, when I did this, I intentionally spent a great deal of time doing it. I put notations on each of the line items that specifically stated what the amount was for, if there was a NFPA requirement necessary for us to meet that. I did it on purpose, so that you guys had, you had the option of, oh, you know, what's he, what this money for? Well, you can click on it, it'll come up, and it'll tell you exactly what it's for, and what it's going to spend. So I guess my question is, also, when, when do I get feedback on that? When do I know that that budget is, is passed and accepted? When do I know that, you know, I'll be able to file the POs for those line items? I also placed a capital expenditure section, which recalls for a new medic unit this year, and I think the amount that I put in there was in the 200,000 range, but, and honestly, I think that we, I've been shopping around, looking at demo for much less than that. If that we could get on, on the street quicker, and considering our current situation now, I think that's kind of been stepped up a little bit, in urgency. We also put in for replacing an engine and a medic, you know, which we could look into next, I'm sorry, engine and ladder company, but we could talk about that next year. I think this year we can get by with what we have, and I think we'll be okay. But, I put that all in there, and I guess that's my next question. I mean, I'm going to be moved into this position as of July, still trying to work, figuring out how things work, and how things are supposed to work, and who's supposed to do what, and when will I know this budget that I put in, whether or not the items that I put in for, the amounts I put in for, and when will I know that, yes, this is a go, you know, if you can put in for this stuff? I have control over some things, I mean, contractual issues with the unions, or personnel, and I don't have much control over, but, you know, other things I do, and I've actually, I think, something that you may know, I've taken some steps recently that I think has reduced the overtime, I think as of this point, compared to last year, or other times, one-fourth of what it was last year at this time. And that, I compliment the union for that, the fire public union, you know, making the union stuff up in memory, even though I wasn't exactly in favor of it, being the fire chief, I'm sure that I had to be done. So, I guess my big question is, can I get the 20,000 to get this fixed pronto, ASAP, because of the situation we're in? Can we look into the purchase of another medic unit pretty quick? And when will I know whether this budget that I put in is the budget that I'm going to be working with this year?
Well, as far as all the line items that there is, I don't know that anything would be approved, I don't think with them tonight, but I mean, it's a matter of, are we able to forward everything, and rightfully so, we'd love to, but are we going to be able to, I don't get an answer right now, but we have to have something done, we would like to have it done, or we have to have something done soon, because we have to have, not only it done for our own purposes, either for everybody's operational purposes, for all the different departments, but also by state restrictions, we have to have it finished by a specific date as well. But we would like to be ahead of that date, if at all possible. In regards to the immediate need, I mean, is something that we could change the temporary potentially this evening for the?
We would have to do, we would have to do a, an ordinance to change the appropriations.
Yeah. So, I mean, I guess my question would be, if the law department can give us a copy of an ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, the cover sheet, I can make Exhibit A in two minutes.
Yeah, okay. So we'll see if we can get that done tonight.
What was the total that you needed for the repair of the existing vehicle?
I put in for 20,000, I don't think we should do that much.
Right, we'll make it 20,000.
I'm going to say 20,000, 16,000, I'm going to make sure we have enough to give it around.
Could you use the new ENS key for that thing?
I, I think it wasn't.
No, it don't. So, Mr. Sinker, so it doesn't look like we have an appropriations ordinance that we were going to be considering tonight, unless there's an amendment that we're planning on?
There is going for tonight.
Okay, okay.
Curious on if we change the, to bring appropriations, do we have to account for that somewhere else, like, do we have to take from?
No, we're still under our certificate.
Okay.
So we can rest that tonight, and then encourage everybody to?
I mean, you understand my concerns, that would explain the, and I, I think if you bring up the room, the one final thing, that if we don't transport, we also don't get some compensation, the unit that transports will get the compensation, so another city would be compensated, so we would actually lose money that way.
And they would probably charge our citizens.
Yes, that's the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Where we don't, if they don't have insurance.
Except 400, 500, 600 dollars, that's.
Well, more than that.
Oh, the one, okay.
So we probably might have to use.
My wife was charged for it.
Use the lane, except for room circumstances.
One of the things that we're going to talk about tonight is putting together these permanent appropriations, which are due by April 1st, because the old ones run out. And we've really been in a state of limbo while we've been waiting for this commission to be seated, and Mr. Sinker and I have spoken pretty regularly about this, hoping that it would have been seated before we come to these, these appropriations. But the problem we have is that we have to have a plan within 120 days, and that financial plan becomes the appropriations for the next five years, and any changes that have to be made for those have to be approved by the commission. What are the things that we're allowed to do in this, in our appropriations or in the plan, still, there's still questions dealing with that. And so if we pass appropriations now, and then they come back in a month, they go, wow, you have to change all of these things you're doing. you have to change all of these things you're doing. How far can we go in these appropriations? And that's some of the things that we're going to talk about quickly tonight. And so I greatly appreciate your budget. I haven't looked at it, and the police chief has one too. And that is something that you need to do every year.
Right.
And by June, have the one for next year so that we can actually start planning further back to make these changes and to stay up on it. And that's, that's how we're going to get out of the mess that we're in, is looking at these things and how they work over time. And all departments will be doing these also, or should be doing them now.
Right.
So it's not, I mean, greatly appreciate it. It's not in what we're going to look at tonight. That's one of the things we're going to talk about, is what can you put in and what can you take out?
I want to make sure that anyone gets a copy of that. I want to have it emailed to them.
I believe the clerk of council has them, and then I also have copies of them to email and the chiefs have them.
If you pull up on your computer, click right on it, tells exactly where each line is for.
I'll make sure I request that.
I hope they're in there.
Get that done tonight.
He's got, like, he can put them off. This permanent appropriation worksheet, the first few pages are the most important that deal with the general fund. All the other funds are based on what their certificate of estimated resources are. The first column is actually what we project the payroll to be for this year, and that is with the new health insurance applications. So if you compare this to?
That engine?
Yeah, this is in here.
Okay.
But if you compare, that's why there's a difference. If you compare it to the recovery plan, that has the old health insurance numbers in it, and then they're taken out at the bottom because that's the way the state wants it The other columns that are on here, and when you look at the actual Excel spreadsheet, if you hover over each one of these numbers, it'll pop up and it'll tell you exactly what it is for. So when we're looking at things like the mayor's office, $475 added to payroll, well, that's longevity pay. Because we owe longevity pay from December of 2016. We owe police and fire buybacks from 2016. We owed clothing allowance. And all these things are put in in these additional columns, and you'll see what they are as they pop up. But we need to add those amount to the amount of the appropriations for each department because that's money that we're going to have to pay. Similarly, if we get down to the end of the year, we're like, okay, these things that are due in December, like longevity and like some of the buybacks, if we say, you know what, we're going to have money to pay those in January but not December, we can back those out and put those in next year's appropriations. The thing the state is really driving home is do not appropriate anything that you do not intend to pay. So unless we're saying we will have the cash and we will be able to pay it this year, it should not be in here. There is one line on page, and the number of these is like five, that says longevity. It's a big black line that goes across. That comes out because that's the total of longevity, but I broke it down and put it in each key for each department, how much it has. So, and those are what, a lot of those little numbers are. So our total amount that we're over, when you look at this, this is really without buying anything new. I think the new ambulance is in here or a payment for it. But other than that, this was just over a million dollars over the revenue that we're expecting to get this year. So if we look at the amount that it's over the certificate, it's 2.5 million that would have to come out. Now, what the state auditor is telling me is we should be able to appropriate based on our revenue and not on our certificate amount. Because realistically, I don't think that we are going to fix this problem we're in in one year. You know, we could be balanced at the end of 2018 if we got $2.5 million out of the budget this year, but that's not realistic. So what they want to see is, yes, the end of this year, we will still owe some things and we will still have encumbrances that are not paid at the end of the year, but our negative balance, as long as it's less than it was last year. And it shows a plan to get caught up, that everything they're telling me is we can base our appropriations on our revenue and not on our certificate amount. The county disagrees with that, but the state said they were going to talk to them. So we do need to cut things out of here, though. And we do need to be realistic about what we can pay this year and what we can't pay this year. And if we're talking about partially funding something for a year, if you say, well, there's this program we have and we are going to fund it through June, and if we can't come up with the money, we're going to cut it, you could do that. But it has to be in here and then come June, you've got to have a plan. So you do have some more leeway in it this year than in previous years, but it's going to have to balance. The other thing that's not in here is the minimum man savings that we've got. And there's a few things that have to be put in, but roughly, as it stands right now, we probably need to take another $750,000 out of what's just listed here. Now, you're going to have to look at this on the Excel spreadsheet. And did you send that out or do you want me to?
I think I forwarded it.
Okay.
At least to members of finance.
I can send it to TA tomorrow too, and then you can send that out to everybody and get in there and kind of mess around with it and look at these things and how we're going to pay for them. And if we're going to say, you know what, coming at the end of the year, we don't have the money to pay longevity pay in December, so let's pay in January because we'll be able to use tax, property tax money that comes in because we won't have to pay an extra $600,000 of it like we did this year to get caught up on the police and fire pension. If you want to do that, we can put that in here and then back those numbers out and put them into next year's plan, next year's appropriations. So where this is the worksheet that will actually print out at the end what the budget is, you still should be referring to the worksheet that's for the recovery plan. But when you're looking at that, realize that there are some numbers in there that will look higher on that one because the big thing that's going to affect it is about $600,000 worth of health insurance that we're saving this year that is not on that sheet that is on this one. Those savings are not reflected. They're reflected as a line item after all of the information is there because that's the way the state wants it. That has been updated again. We've submitted a new one to the state. They wanted some fine changes. To give you an example, 2014 and 2015, we put encumbrances and expenses together because that's, you know, it's not when you paid it, it's when you encumbered it for that year. And what they wanted us to do was back all those out, gesture the actual cash payments in each key, and put the total encumbrances in one lump sum as a line on the bottom. So we did that. It's a lot of just these how to dot the i's and cross the t's, and that's what we're going through now, waiting for the commission to get seated. On this information, I encourage you to look at what the fire chief and police chief submitted because these numbers here are just those sort of raw starting numbers that we've used for the past few years. If you want to know anything about exact keys, how much is spent, if you look at the auditor's report and go to that last section, every key for every department for the past 10 years, it shows you the exact amount of cash that was spent. If you want to know how much radios cost the police department in 2014, it's there. It's pretty easy to read. So this is a good reference to see past expenses related to what you're putting together But we're going to have to cut some things out. It's got to get down to at least below the level of our revenue or the state will approve it. And from my understanding, as we submit things like this, the state first approves it, making sure that, you know, it's formatted okay and our expectations are reasonable, and then it goes to the commission for approval. And the commission approves the actual plan 120 days after it's seated.
So I'm going to start with, a couple of questions if I could, just on one simple number on, I think I said you, the total general fund, the first column shows a total of 12, 249, 49.
Yeah, that's.
Typo.
No, what it did is, as we ran it through a sort program and we said add up this entire column, when it sorted, it shorted that column, and I fixed the one for the total appropriations.
Yeah, the other line was correct.
Yeah.
And then under 0912, you know, in the parks?
Yes.
I just, we had 101172 as far as on the personnel, but then in the middle, we had kind of backed out.
Because there is nobody working in parks in the general fund right now.
Okay.
So this was, you know, when we put the plan together for the fiscal emergency worksheet, we put in as close to full staffing in all departments and making that sort of ideal to show how far over budget we would be. And so that's where that number comes from, and we're saying, okay, if we're not hiring two new people to work there, that can be backed out.
Okay.
And it's just like we'll back out some money for the overtime savings for the police or for the fire department. We could probably back a little bit of money out from the, we'll have to figure out where the police expenditures are related overtime versus actual costs of those seven employees because there's kind of a tipping point where you start saving even though you're spending overtime. But then there's a point where it gets more expensive.
Yeah.
Because you're buying benefits. I did put in $25,000 on the council, and, you know, when you actually look at the software one, that is what we need to make our codified ordinances online and help the mayor's court not get sued and everything else, plus the so many bound ones.
So, I could go over this with you later, but it is out of, on that 2,500 key on that refunds, and that one we owe from this past year, is that what we anticipate going? We have 374, 360 earnings tax refunds.
That's a, that's a, that's an estimate based on the average amount that we typically get plus the two last med pays payments. That's why it's.
I thought we only had one, but that's fine.
No, I thought we only had one too.
Right, and then it's the bond retirement of 350E, 356, that's all we owe.
It's the full amount.
Yeah.
And again, in those keys, separation pay, bond retirement, and one other, those no longer are subsidy keys. They no longer go to pay another fund, and they're just paid out of that key, so those funds are frozen. Similarly, the EMS subsidy and recreation subsidy, they, those funds won't be used this year, but that's still the amount of money that we owe from the?
From what?
Right.
That's why I get that in the indicators also on those two.
So that's the number of open purchase orders that they have.
Yeah.
So that might drop.
Yeah. All right, I have a few others, but that's nothing that really. And then, what we'll do then, unless somebody has a question, we'll get together again, but we can all review the sheets, try to make some sense. Report to another, what we poured out, revert from those here. Fire chief, police chief, we did, here's in change of temporary appropriations that added to the 0843 EMS fund to increase that by $20,000 in order to cover the repair expense for the medic unit that's in shot right now. So unless anybody has a question, we can call this meeting to adjourned and then we'll fill this out and get her signed up. But thank you all for coming. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.